Ed, whenever you're ready.
I just want to like an inch.
Okay, I want to, uh...
But I will take a mile.
The Thursday, August 2nd, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. Please rise for the pledge. Mr. Monroe, lead us to the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence for those serving our country both at home and abroad? Thank you. Okay. First up on tonight's agenda is announcements. Ms. Frescatore?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow board members, our professionals, and folks in the public. I'll make some announcements on behalf of our Parks and Rec Department. Discount tickets are available for Regal movie tickets. They're $9.50 as well as amusement park and local attraction tickets. Tickets, all tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Parks and Rec office in the Warminster Community Park. The incredible veggie contest will run August 1st through September 21st at the Park and Rec office. Bring your heaviest tomato, squash, zucchini, or eggplant to the office to be weighed any time, Monday through Friday. Burpee Seed is sponsoring the event and will provide a prize for the winner in each category. The annual fall yard, community yard sale will be held Saturday, August 25th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Warminster Community Park. Tables are $25. The annual newsletter will be going out in mid-September. The annual golf scramble will be held Monday, October 8th. Save the date for Friends of Warminster Parks Casino Night. That's going to be on Saturday, October 20th at Ann's Choice. $35 tickets will include beef and beer, $50 in chips, raffles, and gaming tables. Registration is now open for the Radio City Christmas Spectacular on November 17th. Tickets to the second mezzanine and motor coach transportation are provided. There's also some free time for you to stroll around in New York City. We're still taking registration for remaining summer programs. For any information on any of these items, please check the website or call the Parks and Rec office. Also have one more announcement, Mr. Chair. The Friends of the Warminster Community Park are having a fundraiser to benefit for the spray park. They want to build a spray park in the park. So we have tickets that we're selling. We're looking for sponsors from local businesses, and all proceeds will benefit the parks, and the goal is $45,000. We have these tickets for sale, and on the back of them, it does list all of, they're doing silent auctions for amazing trips. So we're looking for sponsorships and folks to buy the tickets. All of us supervisors have them, and I'm liaison, so see me first. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make one announcement. There's a, um, an organization that I just discovered just this past week. Just to go in a little bit of a background, we discovered a wild animal that was injured on our property. Didn't know what to do with it. Somebody called us and said, "You should reach out to AARK." I don't know who AARK is, but essentially they are a wildlife refuge. They're not that far away. They're out in Chalfont. Didn't know they existed. So what we did is we called them up. We were able to take the animal there. And just when I was there, I saw all of, I mean, it was basically, it was a room full of all of these dedicated volunteers. They had a baby raccoon on site. They had several hawks that were injured that they were nursing back to health. And, you know, of course, and they're in there, they're not getting paid. The room smelled horrible, as you can imagine. And I thought the minimum I could do is give them a shout-out. So again, they are called, it's the AARK Wildlife Rehabilitation and Education Center. They're located at 1531 Upper Stump Road in Chalfont. Their phone number, so if you ever do come across an injured animal, it's on your property and not even on your property, you can give them a call at (215) 249-1938. Again, that's (215) 249-1938. Of course, they are fully funded by contributions. They are having a dine and donate event. It's Enjoy Dinner at Chapter 19 in Doylestown on September the 19th, 2018. If you mention AARK, 20% off, I'm sorry, 20% of your bill will be donated to AARK Wildlife Rehabilitation National and Education Center. Build a Better Ark Campaign. AARK treats over 5,000 patients each year, making them the busiest wildlife rehabilitation center in the state of Pennsylvania. So for more information, go to www.aark.org. And that is all that I have.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Monroe. Mr. McPhillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to want to remind everyone, if you have any unwanted or expired prescription medications, you can safely get rid of them over at the Warminster Police Station. It's the green box at the top of the steps. And it seems like every day we're reading about this opioid crisis, and I got to tell you, one of the best ways to combat against this is to get rid of your unwanted prescription medications. Last month, the township took back over 75 pounds, and year-to-date, we've taken back over 400 pounds. So please, tell your friends, tell your families, if you have any unwanted prescription medications, you can get rid of them over at the police station. Next, I'd like to thank, give a big thank you to the owner of ShopRite, Joe Cowie, who allowed myself and Bus County District Attorney Matt Weintraub to come and talk to his customers the other day. We spoke to a bunch of residents. It was a great time. And I got to tell you, Mr. Chairman, the big difference between me and the DA is nobody wanted to take a selfie with me. With the DA, they wanted to do it every 15 minutes. Kind of got tired of it. But it was a great time. We really appreciate everything ShopRite does for Warminster Township. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McPhillips. Mr. Crowley?
No announcements.
Nothing?
Nope.
Okay. I have just a few announcements. Number one, I want to congratulate the VE U-16 Boys Team for winning the national championship of the USYSAs National Presidents' Cups on Sunday, July 15th in Westfield, Indiana. The VE defeated Heat FC from Nevada, 2 to 1. VE goals were scored by Shane Collier and Sean McCartney. This is the first national championship by a VE team in either youth or adult competition. So that's kudos to the VE. And while we're on the subject of the VE, this Saturday from 10 to 4 is their Second Annual Panzer Fest. Not Tom Panzer, our county treasure. It's a car show. In fact, I'll be entering my car in it as well, and it's a fundraiser for their travel team. They send a team to Germany every year, and this is one of the ways they raise money to send the kids over to Germany to play some soccer. So 10 to Ford V, there'll be refreshments and a lot of nice cars to take a look at. The only other announcement I have is that there was an executive session prior to tonight's meeting, and I'm going to give that to Mr. Bartle to review.
Yes, thank you. The board met this evening in executive session in the, in a room adjacent to this one, beginning at 6:00 p.m. The executive session lasted until about 10 minutes of 7:00, and so we recessed immediately before this meeting. The purpose of the executive session is a potential matter of litigation, and that is an allowable subject for executive session under Pennsylvania sunshine law.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bartle. Next up for tonight is presentations. The first presentation is the Brad Fox Run. I'm going to ask Darren Meehan to come up. And Darren, after you're done your presentation, I'll be glad to take a brief recess so you can take some pictures.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Darren, it's good to see you again.
Good evening, everyone, and good to see you as well. Thank you for the time. The purpose of our presentation tonight is to give you a summary of the event we held in April of this year. We also have officers from the Abington Police Department who are going to accept a donation for one of our causes that we raised money for. I'm joined tonight with Tom and Kathy Fox, Brad's parents, Jimmy and his wife Melissa, Jimmy's Brad's brother, Sean Victor, who's our Veteran Affairs Coordinator, and Jimmy's kids as well. So just a summary of this year's event. The event was held on April 7th, 2018. This year, we decided to expand it and make it Brad Fox Day instead of the Brad Fox 5K. And the purpose of that was to give a little more focus to the first responders and our military community and make sure that we're recognizing them, we're supporting them, and we're doing what we can for them. And it was, I'm a little bit biased, but it was a hugely successful event. I was very happy with it. It was held at Archbishop Wood again this year. If you recall, April 5th, two days before, there was 100% chance of three inches of snow, which forced us to move the staging to the parking lot on the south side of Woods Campus. And it was really an incredible feat between us, the Warminster Police Department, the firefighters, Warminster's Emergency Management. We had help from the Warminster Parks and Rec. And really, just everybody came together in two days and put our heads together and figured out how we could make this happen. Thankfully, the snow didn't come. It was, it was a pretty nice day considering how it could have turned out, but it really, it really did turn out to be a nice day. We had just under 400 runners. We had just under 200 walkers, and then we had about 35 people for our Brad Fox Workout of the Day, which I'll explain that in a little more detail. We had some guest speakers this year. We're always, we're always grateful for our guest speakers, including Mark McKee. DA Matt Weintraub is there. Everybody likes to hear from him. Chris Diaz, who runs a company called Action Tank, and he is a Pat Tillman Scholar. He attended and spoke. Chief Lawrence from the Plymouth Township Police Department also spoke. And Megan Klingensmith from Mission 22, which also is one of the causes that we supported this year. She was there, and she gave a few remarks. So as I said, we expanded it and included this veteran expo. We added Sean to the group as a Veteran Affairs Coordinator. And what we did was we brought in various military-leaning organizations, nonprofit groups, to give them a little bit, a little bit of exposure, and also to make our local veteran community aware of these groups that are out there, that they could either benefit from their help, or if they have time and they want to focus their efforts, here were some groups. So we had groups as national as the Pat Tillman Foundation, which is based out of Arizona, and then we had the Warminster VFW was there, the Air National Guard, the Angel Flight, which provides air travel, complimentary air travel for military families who need to move across the country for a variety of reasons. So this was our first year with that. It was, it was extremely successful. Again, I'm biased, but it was, it was very successful. We also this year worked with a local CrossFit gym or box to develop the Brad Fox Memorial Workout of the Day. It's a great workout. It's, it's a heck of a workout, but that, that was something new that we tried this year. Again, it was, it was very successful. I think we're going to tweak it a little bit. And the intention is also to find a location on the anniversary of Brad's death, which is coming up, to also do the memorial workout on that day as well. The other thing that I want to point out is we had an autograph mural this year, which if you can move to the next slide, there's a photograph of it. This was donated by the UPS Store in Warminster, and it's...
And constructed by John Sansoni.
The, the frame was constructed by John Sansoni and Paul Sansoni. I have to acknowledge both, or I'll get in trouble.
Oh, I know you will.
But the UPS Store donated seven feet tall by 20 feet wide. As you can see, hundreds of people that attended autographed it, and Sean and I are working with, with the United States military to get this overseas to, to a deployment so that those people over there understand that while they're over there, we're not forgetting about them here. Okay? Can you jump to the next slide? As I said, we have some members of the Abington Police Department here, and they're going to accept a donation from us. One of the causes that we raised money for this year was Officer Brian Rickards, who is a 19-year veteran of the Abington Police Department. The beginning of 2017, I want to say that the first quarter of 2017, he was diagnosed with ALS. He's, he's a member of the K-9 unit in Abington, the Abington Police Department, and since then, he's been battling ALS. And, you know, if you know anything about that disease, it's, it's not easy in a variety of reasons, the least of which is the finances. So in our efforts to support local police, we chose Brian Rickards' family. I spoke with Chief Malloy from the Abington Police Department, and Brian can really use everybody's prayers and thoughts right now. So just keep that in mind. So at this time, if we can just, if I can ask Tom and Kathy to come up, we're going to present them with the check, and then maybe we can take a quick picture when we're, when we're finished. I'm not done here.
And there's, and there's a mic there if you need it, Darren.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. So we're going to, after this slide, we're going to get into the, the other groups that we donated to, but we're, we're very honored to be able to tonight provide the Abington Police Department with a $10,000 check for, for his family. So Kathy, you have the check if you want to give it to those folks over there.
Come on up here, fellas. Please, come on up.
Yeah, come on up here, guys.
Kathy, come on, come on up here.
So on behalf of Brad, we'd like to help out Rickards' family.
Thanks, folks. And if you can just stick around, we'll get a picture in about five minutes. I'll make this really fast. If you can jump to the next slide. This year, we raised money for, for five causes. Officer Brian Rickards being one of them. We again wrote a check for the Brad Fox Scholarship at William Tennant High School, which is awarded to an outgoing, a graduating senior who has a focus on law enforcement or will be joining the military. We, this year, started with the Brad Fox Scholarship, which is awarded to an incoming freshman at Archbishop Wood High School where, where we staged the event. And that scholarship is $2,500 a year for each of the four years they're there, assuming they behave. I went to Woods, so it's a decent gamble, you know? We also donated to the Warminster VFW Post 6493, who among other things are really big at making the Memorial Day Parade in Warminster a reality. And then we supported Mission 22, which is a national group that works with, with our veterans and is, they're combating military veteran suicide, but they're also, they also have a host of other programs. They're, they're really good. It's a great program. And Megan from Mission 22 joined us. Sean's actually a Mission 22 ambassador as well. And so for this year, we were able to make donations of $50,000 total. So all of our causes each got $10,000. And this being our sixth event, we've now donated, in Brad's name, more than $250,000. Wow. If you could just jump to the next slide for me? I just want to point out a couple of people, a couple of people, a couple of groups who really, we really want to thank. And Warminster Township, everybody involved in Warminster Township, you, you're extremely supportive of what we do, as long as our requests are within reason, you say yes to everything that we ask for.
And Chief.
Yes, and Chief. The Police Department, the Fire Department, our EMTs, Emergency Management, Joe Velton's a great ally for us. Warminster Parks and Rec, again, they're great people. Plymouth Township is really good to us. Every year, they bring Brad's vehicle. They come, and again, they, they'll do pretty much whatever we ask them to do to support this event. We have a ton of sponsors. It really would be tough to name all of them and keep this under five more minutes. So I just want to thank all of them. Steam Pub did their Brad Fox Menu again this year, which was a huge success. It's a great menu. If you, if you haven't had it in the, in the spring, they have a Brad Fox Menu that is foods that are inspired by foods that Brad liked to make and, and cook. So they meet with Tom and Kathy and some members of the family, and they'll tell stories about things that Brad did, and then they come up with food to, to match that. It's, it's a really good menu. We want to thank our runners and our walkers. Obviously, without them, this wouldn't be successful. Our first year, we had 250. This year, this year, we didn't have quite as many as last year, but I think when, when they're calling for snow, it makes it difficult.
Scares people away.
And the community in general. We closed York Road for one hour to make the 5K a success. There's, there are people that are affected up and down York Road, and we don't hear a single complaint from anybody. And some of those people really are either stuck in their house for an hour, or they make plans to be away for the hour if they need to get out. So this, this has always been a community event, and the community has really done well to rally around us. And so we want to thank the Warminster community and the surrounding communities as well. The UPS Store, this year, they came on board, and again, you know, anything we asked them for, they did. I was talking to Reggie, the guy that owns it, and I brought up the autograph mural, and he said, "We can do it. We'll just, we'll do it. We'll donate it." So it's, it's people like that that make it a success. The Fox family is supportive of everything that we do. They're on our committee. They attend all of our meetings. They listen to the crazy ideas that we have, and, you know, they're very polite in not saying no to just about everything that we say. So they're really good. They say no to some things. We have, we have a great volunteer staff that joins us every year. I think this year, we had about 70, 75 volunteers that come, and again, they do whatever we ask them to do. And finally, we have a committee of about probably 25 people, and they, we meet almost probably weekly from January through April and spend hours just talking through this. And again, it's just, it's a limitless dedication from these people. And so it's important to me to be able to say thank you to them publicly for all the work that they do as well. And if you can go to the next slide. This is a new program that we're starting this year. Full disclosure, I stole this from a place in, in South Carolina when I was there last year for vacation. I went into a gift shop, and there was a sign on the door, it was a handwritten sign that said essentially this, and that is that, that we're proud to support members of our military community, stop in for a discount. And so we talked about it, and what we did was we developed these window clings, which it's backwards here, so you can't read it, so that's why it's up there. We paid to produce these. I'm going to, I talked to Greg. We're going to leave a supply of them in the administration building. If there's local businesses that want to come and get them, they can put them in their window. They don't owe us anything. They're not, they're not, there's no obligation to us, so they don't have to make any donation to us. It's just their chance to advertise in their window. If they have a veteran discount, let veterans know, "Come on in. You know, we're, we're proud of your service, and we'll give you a discount." And then it's up to them what they want the discount to be. So there'll, there will be a supply of them in the administration building, or they can email the foundation, and, and we'll get them out to them as well. And again, whatever, whatever they want the discount to be, they can decide on, on the discount. But it's, it's a nice way to advertise. If you're the kind of business that, that respects the sacrifices people make, you know, we want to help you advertise it. So thank you to the gift shop in South Carolina, too. Next, there's two coming soon events I want to let you know about. The first is we're developing a Cocktails and Caroling Toys for Tots Celebration. Brad's brother Jimmy and Jimmy's wife, every year, put together a really great Toys for Tots fundraiser. And so this year, we're going to, you know, just blow it up and make it even bigger, essentially, and, and put some cocktails and caroling in it as well, and do a weekend to support the Toys for Tots, which, which is a great, a great cause around Christmas. So, yeah, and Brad was a huge advocate for Toys for Tots when he was alive, and he would do a Toys for Tots toy drive every year as well, so...
Where will you be holding that event? Will that be a...
Uh, we're figuring that out. That's not even the official name just yet. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, for sure. Yeah. Yeah, we haven't really figured out the name. I'm just kind of putting a bug out there. I have the space, so I'm going to take the advertising. You know what I'm saying? And then just the last thing is, we met with Wood. After the race, we met with Wood. We recap this year's event. We talk about what went well, what we could do better. Wood loves the, the work that we do there. You know, we leave the place better than when we found it. And so we've already set April 6, 2019 as the date for next year's race. We did try to make it later in the year, hoping that it doesn't snow in late April, but just scheduling for a variety of reasons didn't work. So it'll be April 6, 2019. It won't snow that day. It'll be bright. It'll be sunny. It'll be about 75 and breezy about that time. So, yeah, yeah, we'll take 60. 60 is fine. And dry is good. So it'll be April 6, 2019. Again, we'll be back. I anticipate probably getting back here in October and having a little bit more info about that, and then info about the Toys for Tots as well. Okay?
Awesome.
So again, thank you to everyone. Thank you to just the entire Warminster community. Your support is really important to make it work.
Well, thank you. And I want to thank Tom and Kathy Fox, too, for the dedication that you do to keep your son's memory alive, and it's really commendable. Really is.
Yeah. All right.
All right. Well, I'm going to ask if we could take a brief recess so Darren can take some pictures with the officers, and please, the officers from Abington, please send Rich Man Freddie our regards when you go back to the township tomorrow morning. And we're going to take a brief recess. Okay. Want to resume our meeting. The next up on tonight's agenda is the Business of the Month Quarterly with the Economic Development Committee, which Jason Crowley is the chairman of, so I'm going to...
Joe Warner.
I'll ask Jason, ask the chamber. There's some people from the Chamber of Commerce here.
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, Mr. McPhillips and I initiated this iteration of the Economic Development Committee. And over the past couple of years, the committee's been able to support the actions of this township and the board in, in revitalizing our economic community here. As we've been building and growing the committee, we've been taking more and more actions to get out there and interact with our business community. One of those big steps that we took was partnering with the Greater Buxmont Chamber of Commerce to institute a Business of the Month, where we recognize a business each month in Warminster. We'd like to introduce the Business of the Months for the second quarter, I think that's right. Second quarter? Yeah. For the second quarter. And to do so, I'd like to invite the current chairman of the Economic Development Committee.
Oh, I thought you were.
Yeah. My term ended, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
They booted me out. You don't have to remind me.
Boated or booted?
They, they said, "Yeah, maybe it's Joe's turn." But no, Dan and I were lucky enough to have a turn at it, but really, this, the Economic Development Committee is going to be driven by the, by the citizens and by the businesses that are in it, and Mr. Warner is a great example of both. And I'd like to invite him up, along with guests that he'll introduce, to present the Business of the Month for the second quarter. Joe, would you please come up?
My apologies, Joe, and we will take a brief recess for you to take some pictures when you're done your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually missed a meeting. That's how I got elected chairman. So as, as Jason said, we started this a couple of years ago in concept, and we're implementing it. We've recognized two other organizations and businesses in the past. One was the Centennial Education Foundation, which the board recognized at your very nice meeting over at Ann's Choice. And then the other one was the Cowie Family ShopRite. So part of what we're doing as well is we're developing a spot on, on joint websites in conjunction with the township and the chamber. That's still in development, but that'll be an ongoing thing where all of the businesses and organizations who have been spotlighted in the past will be there for the residents or anybody who wants to go on and see what they do for the community. And, you know, without going into a lot of detail, just the idea was that we were going to get out in conjunction with those folks to start with, who were members of the Greater Buxmont Chamber of Commerce and are either doing business or centered in Warminster Township and have provided outstanding services or business to the community. So with that in mind, we just had a very long presentation for the Brad Fox Foundation. I'm not going to reiterate everything they do, but I would like to ask Darren and Mr. and Mrs. Fox, if they're still here, to come up for the, for the April recognition.
They're probably on their way.
Oh, okay. And while we're waiting for them, I would like to introduce the current president of the Greater Buxmont Chamber of Commerce, Patricia Huber Boder, and our executive director, Judy Doherty. If you ladies can come up.[1630.13][1630.13](applause) Why don't you stand in front of the table, and then we'll have the recipients go up on the riser if that's okay.
And that microphone, you could even use, if you need a microphone, that can be turned on.
All right, you got it.
Okay.
Darren, while you're coming up, I want to remind everyone that Darren left a big bag of swag back there with Brad Fox. Brad Fox swag, anyone that would like some on your way out, or whatever's left, we'll leave at the desk, the front desk tomorrow for the residents.
Why don't you, why don't you go behind, and you can go up on the risers?
Yeah, up here, please.
And then, so the Brad Fox Foundation would be the recognized organization for April. For May, we're proud to recognize Citadel Federal Credit Union, founded in 1937 by 13 workers from Luke &amp; Steel in Coatesville, PA, and they've been able to grow throughout Chester, Bucks, Montgomery, Delaware, and Philadelphia. They started 80 years ago and are now one of the largest locally-owned financial institutions in the greater Philadelphia area, and they have a great branch here in Warminster, and they're big supporters. As part of the nonprofit company, their focus is to provide value to their members and the community. And in recognition of their service, I'd like to call up their branch manager, Michaela.[1712.04][1712.04](applause) And our June member, June Spotlight of the Month is Hattborough Federal, which was founded in 1941, and shortly thereafter issued their first mortgage within two months of being opened. They're proud to be in outstanding financial products, awesome customer service, and contributions to individuals, families, and organizations in both Bucks and Eastern Montgomery County. Within the area, they have supported the Warminster Township's Park and Recreation Department, the Greater Buxmont Chamber Scholarship Fund, the Centennial Education Foundation, Buxmont Meals on Wheels, and many other organizations. And I'd like to welcome Linda Roner and Mary Ellen Rosanova.[1759.04][1759.04](applause) So on behalf of the Economic Development Committee and the Greater Buxmont Warminster Chamber, we'd like to present you with these certificates of appreciation for your contribution to Warminster Township. First would be for Brad Fox. Citadel Bank, Michaela.[1795.23][1795.23](applause) And last, but certainly not least, Linda, for Hapbro Federal Savings.
Excellent.
I'd like to take a few minutes. Pat, Judy, if you have anything to say, or we'll let the recipients say a couple of words, you can use the mic.
I don't know if it's on or not, if it's not, you might have to turn it on. Sounds good.
Thank you, thank you very much for this certificate, it's very nice. I'm gonna keep this very short, because everybody's tired of hearing from me at this point, but, but we really appreciate this recognition, it's very nice. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, too, for this recognition. Citadel has been very well-known within Chester County, but we've only been in Bucks County for about three years now. My branch is the only one in Bucks County, so I really appreciate this, my, you know, my whole branch does, and so does Citadel. And if you ever are interested, you know, you can always come and see me, see my staff, just to say hi.
On behalf of Hapbro Federal, I would like to thank you as well. We are very honored, and as many people in Warminster know, our mission is to get back to our community. We're a mutual bank, we're owned by our depositors, so we don't have to pay stockholders dividends and interest back for their return on investment. Our investment, in our eyes, is our community in which we do business. So, that's our motto, that's what we're doing, we're very active in youth, financial literacy in youth, and first-time homebuyers. We want to educate those new people who are doing their first home. So, that's basically our premise of the last couple of years, and thank you, both, you've been strong supporters of our organization for many years. Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, I'm gonna ask the chair if we can have a couple of minutes for pictures.
Absolutely, we'll take a brief recess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I want to resume tonight's meeting, we're on to Presentations, Item C, 2017 Audit, Dunlop and Associates. I'm gonna ask John McCarelli, our finance director, to come up.
Good evening, I'm pleased to announce that we've had our 2017 Audit completed. It was done, actually, back in May, done on a timely basis. It's an annual event, an annual requirement of the township, and a good business practice. The audit was performed by Dunlop and Associates, and here tonight, to give a brief presentation and be available for questions, is Julie Davis from Dunlop and Associates.
Awesome.
One other thing, just to mention, the audit report is on the township website, if people would like to look at a full copy. A copy was prepared in front of the board members, and also, there's a summary sheet that was handed out, that'll be used for talking points from our principal auditor. So, I'd like to turn it over to Julie Davis.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, thanks for having me.
Good evening.
So, the report itself, and I see you have copies of it, is 72 pages long, so, in the interest of time, I did a little, summarized it as much as I could on your handout. It's 72 pages, so it's kinda hard to summarize down to one page. But, so, the first page there, and it's a little busy, so if you focus on the right side of it, the first page there is a summary of the government-wide financial information. The government-wide financial information presents the township's finances on a long-term basis, so it includes your long-term debt, your capital assets, your pension liabilities, that kind of thing. There's, the first few columns there are the governmental activities, so that is all of your funds combined into one, except for the golf course. The middle set of columns there is the golf course, and then, the last in the box there is the total of both. So, it's just a summary, it's just a very brief summary of the assets, liabilities, the revenues and expenses for the year. So, the golf course had a better year than it did last year, so that's great, I'm sorry, 17 versus 16 was a better year for the golf course. The governmental activities was a little behind the year before, and, but I will also point out that under the long-term liabilities, if you look all the way to the, to the right there, you can see the long-term liability's dropped by $4 million, which was your net pension liability. So, that's a great thing, that that did drop. The second page of your handout is the fund financial information, so this is a short-term view of your financial information, there's no debt on the balance sheet, and there's no capital assets, things like that. So, I just grouped it by general fund, you know, because that's your main operating fund, all the other funds, and then, the total. So, just looking at the revenues and expenditures, which is the bottom table there, the revenues did drop a bit from 17, 16 to 17, and the expenses, expenses went up, sorry. So, the, the total results, all the way on the right there, you can see the difference between the two years. I mean, there's a lot of reasons for that, but I won't go into great detail, I'm sure you're familiar with the results of the year, so. And then, the last page of it is, just because I talked about the liability, the pension liability, and I know that's been of interest in the past, just to show you a summarized version of the trend in the net pension liability. So, it improved greatly from 16 to 17, so that is great news. So, this is all in that report, but this is an easier way to look at it, so. Okay, a couple of other things. Every year, when we do the audit, we issue a letter of findings, where we would note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and please report, we do not note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the letter. So, that's an indication that your staff is strong, and that the, using Linda and Vicky from Major and Maestro is a great asset as well. We did not adjust the numbers at all, so the set of books we were given to audit were correct as they were given to us, so that's amazing, actually, that's fantastic. So, that's all I had, if you had any questions for me.
I just wanted to ask about the pension liability. I see that it's trending in the right direction, but I just want to clarify that with the township manager, that we still have an MMO problem.
That's correct, we did receive the, excuse me, MMO for 2019, which is essentially the same as, as 2018. There's a number of factors that go with that, this being one of them.
Which is the minimum municipal obligation to the pension fund?
Yes.
That the township owes annually?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, it's trending in the right direction, but the problem is far from, far from, we're far from out of the woods.
Correct.
Yep, any questions?
We just went over a whole lot of numbers, but in words, what would you say their overall shape of the township?
Um, let me look at the, I mean, you're in a strong, your, your total fund balances and net assets are good overall. I mean, you had a deficit this year, so obviously, that's something you would want to, you know, try to reverse, but, but you still have capacity in your, your fund balances and.
We're looking at a deficit this year and projecting deficits into the future, naturally, that's going to eat away at that fund balance.
Yes.
Just to make sure that I'm, we kind of put this, paint the right picture, you're looking at and auditing the numbers that existed this year, last year, and you're, so you're looking at current and past, and the issues that we have are projected in the future. That's not what you've done.
No.
Thank you.
Just reconcile our books and make sure everything's on the up and up.
Yes.
And everything is.
Yeah, and, and I should have led with that, but we do issue an opinion on the audited financial statements, and it was a clean opinion with no qualifications or modifications. I usually lead with that, because that's the most important thing. So, yeah, so for the past, good.
Good.
I offer no opinion on the future.
Good idea.
No crystal ball, huh?
I don't have a crystal ball. Okay? Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything, does anyone from the public have any questions on the audit? It's available online, and we have a couple cheat sheets here, if anybody wants, wants one to take a look at. Okay. All right, hey, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up is Land Use Matters, Public Hearings and Ordinances, Item A, 2018-4 Waiver of Land Development, 869 West Street Road, Buick O'Neill, Mr. Bartle.
Yes, thank you. The board has before it, for your consideration, a conditional waiver of land development approval. The applicant is M.O.K.O. Enterprises, Inc., O'Neill Buick. The property, as the chairman indicated, 869 West Street Road. The, the resolution that is before you is effective upon the signature of the property owner or the property owner's authorized representative. The reason for the waiver being recommended by the professionals, including our engineering professionals at the, at the township, is that the applicant is proposing to remove 11 parking spaces and convert a portion of the eastern basin to an underground infiltration basin to construct an additional 93 vehicle storage spaces. No landscaping, lighting, or public improvements are proposed with respect to the improvements. So, that, that being the case, this is very minor in nature, and the, the township's professionals have seen it as such. To make sure that the township is protected, however, while the, the formal requirements of land development have been waived, there are various conditions that the applicant must comply with. First, the applicant must comply with attached to land, land development review letters, including that of Boucher &amp; James, the landscape architect, Gilmore &amp; Associates, township engineer, and the township zoning officer review letter. In addition to that, the applicant will sign the township's required land development waiver documentation, will post the necessary financial security, will satisfy all applicable township codes and municipal authority requirements, will obtain all applicable permits of those having jurisdiction for outside agencies, will pay all project-related costs and fees, and will comply with the township zoning hearing board decision of May 23, 2018, decision in order 18-11. That, that essentially summarizes what you're doing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Before I, before I ask for action, what, is there any discussion you want to review real fast, what you guys are?
I know, oh, okay, I was gonna note that Mr. Harris is, is here tonight on behalf of the applicant, he may want to say something to the board.
This is obviously the action that you've been waiting for all night. But in any event, Steve Harris, I represent O'Neill Buick, I'm here with Jack Kakeshi, who's the engineer. There are only three matters that I wanted to.
Steve, the microphone's not on, not on, Ed?
Turned it off.
Okay.
You just pressed the light.
There we go. Thank you, Ed.
Okay, Steve Harris, on behalf of O'Neill Buick, I'm here with Jack Kakeshi, our engineer. There are only three matters that I wish to discuss with you. In the review letters, both from Karen and from the township zoning officer, there was a mention of a discrepancy in square footage. That was the difference between the gross area and the net area, the net area, you know, reducing it by the right-of-way of street road. The right figure is the lower figure, so we'll be cutting about 1,000 square feet of surface, of impervious surface, in order to come into the 73%, which is what the zoning hearing board approved. Secondly.
So, you, you'll be complying with that, then?
We'll be complying, but I just wanted to explain it, because obviously, it's standing out there. Second item is the landscape buffer. There's a comment in Karen's letter about increasing the plantings. The landscape buffer between Price Home and the Pet Palace, or whatever that name is, is not being changed. The landscape buffer was installed 35 years ago, it's not being affected in any way. The only thing that's happened between when the landscape buffer was installed 35 years ago and now is that it's grown taller. So, we're asking for, we're asking that we, that O'Neill Buick not be required to plant additional buffer planting, because the buffer planting that's in place is appropriate, screens, both of the properties will not be affected. We agree with Karen's remark that we need to put tree protection fencing around all the existing landscaping, so that it's not affected, but we'd ask that that requirement be deleted from the approval. The second item is sidewalks.
What, do you want to, Mrs. McNair, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. I'm not clear what buffer landscaping requirement you're referring to. We did ask that regarding landscaping, that there be a mixture of trees, shrubs, and perennials added within the stormwater management facility.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. Behind the stormwater management, between the stormwater management, what's happening here is the stormwater management facility is getting a little smaller from the O'Neill side, but from the outbound sides, there's no change.
So, we're requesting the landscaping be within the facility itself, in the bottom of the facility, to help aid evapotranspiration.
Oh, you're looking for something in the basin itself to make it, oh, okay, that was not clear.
Okay.
So, if you're talking about some plantings in the base.
Within the facility itself.
Okay, we could, that's fine.
Thank you.
That wasn't clear to me.
We can amend the resolution.
I don't think it needs amendment.
No, it doesn't.
No, we could just have it at staff level.
With that clarification, and the second thing is sidewalks. As you know, you start at Norris Town Road, there's a church, then there are three car dealerships, then there's another church, there's no sidewalks there. If you, and I drove by it tonight just to take another look, there's absolutely no room for sidewalks between O'Neill Nissan and Lafferty Chevrolet. O'Neill Nissan, by the way, is Mike O'Neill, Buick O'Neill's brother. So, there just isn't any place to put sidewalks there. So, there's no retail on that side of the road, there's no residential on that side of the road. Requiring a sidewalk across the front of O'Neill Buick is a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere, and not only is it nowhere to nowhere, but it can never be extended further up street road, because there just isn't any room before, between, in front of the Nissan dealership and in front of the Chevy dealership. So, we're asking for relief from the sidewalks.
Does the staff recommend that relief?
It is a comment in the Township Planner's Review, but it's not a comment in our letter. We did see that there were obstacles to installation of the sidewalk, and so we did not specifically call it out in our letter.
So, we'd ask to be relieved from the requirement, we didn't have any problem with the other requirements, they're all, will comply, but we'd ask to be relieved from the requirement to install sidewalks.
Yeah, we generally appreciate the, the landscape architect or engineer calling out for things that they think are appropriate, but that is more appropriately determined by the, by the township engineer than the, than the landscape engineer or architect, because of exactly what, what has just been mentioned, and that is, when it physically can't be done out there in the field, that's a call that you have to make in that regard. So, the board should be advised as such, it's really your shot to call, but in the, in the difference between the two letters, I don't think Judy would have a problem if you sided with the, with the township engineer in that regard, because of the engineering concerns that exist here. In other words, I think, I think you should remove the, the requirement.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with that, yeah, I don't think they need sidewalks. No, I agree. I just wanted a little clarification there.
With that.
Just make sure, Steve, you will, I just want to make sure that the board is in agreement with that.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, will this affect future, when other future businesses come before us? I mean, I don't want to make any kind of precedent, so.
Well, it, it, it is not going to affect it from a standpoint of creating a precedent, and therefore, you must waive with respect to others, because you have certain conditions here, and you're, and you're doing it on the basis of the facts of the case. What has been described, however, is a, is a portion of frontage along a roadway, where it doesn't make any sense to put sidewalk, because it starts essentially nowhere and ends essentially nowhere. nowhere. When that's the case, it's often the case on either side of the property, or maybe the case on either side of the property, and you might have the same argument coming from the people who are immediately adjacent to the property in question, but it does not create a precedent with respect to others in the community generally.
Okay. Is there any other sidewalk in that area from your property to York Road as of right now, on that side?
That's a matter of fact. Interestingly enough, there isn't any sidewalk on the other side either.
Okay.
So there's none.
I know our comprehensive plan, we're trying to increase sidewalks for walkability for our residents. I do understand your point that it would be the sidewalk to nowhere because you don't have connectivity to be able to have the sidewalk. You only have one piece and that would be it, which would be ridiculous. But I could see on the other side with the retail stores eventually down the road that we would expect that there would be sidewalks at that point.
It would make sense. I will say I was frankly surprised that there weren't any sidewalks on the shopping center side of the road, but there aren't.
We know.
And the problem on the O'Neil side is that it's not only a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere, but you can't extend it
Right.
in front of Nissan and Chevrolet. There just isn't any room there. So that's the reason. I'm okay with it. It is a unique situation.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
It's your shot to call if the Board is...
It's the point of the sidewalk, for people to walk on it. No one's going to be able to walk on it.
So if you're in agreement that it should be removed, then we'll do that, and then with the clarifications that have been listed by the applicant, the resolution will be amended.
Yeah, everything else, our and Jack will get it worked out with Karen, and you won't have to see us again.
Is there any other comments, any from the public before the Board takes action? Any other comments from the Board? All right, well, I'm going to call for a motion to consider the approval of resolution, the amended resolution 30 for 869 West Street Road, which is a waiver of land development. Is there a motion? Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Monroe, is there any further discussion from the Board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Will we get an amended, and then we'll sign it and send it back? Thank you very much.
Steve Harris, it's good to see you in the room again.
It's always a pleasure.
Okay, next up on tonight's agenda is item 2018-5 Waiver of Land Development, Christ Home, Shepherd Crossing Maintenance Building. Mr. Bartle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, a conditional waiver of land development approval. The applicant, Christ Home, the property, 1220 West Street Road. Again, this application will be effective upon the signature of the property owner or authorized representative. This is similar to the last waiver that the Board acted upon in that because of the scope of the project, the professionals believe that the strict requirements of land development are not necessary in this matter. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing 1803 square foot and 1867 square foot maintenance garages to construct a 3760 square foot maintenance garage. Improvements also include modifications to the maintenance garage access driveway, site sidewalk, utilities, lighting, and pavement markings. No stormwater management, landscaping, or public improvements are proposed. As you can see, the amount that is being demolished or raised is essentially the same amount as the square footage to be constructed. So for that reason, the waiver makes sense. Again, the township is appropriately protected with the various conditions that are listed. Again, compliance with Boucher &amp; James letter, the Township Zoning Officer Review Letter, the Gilmore letter, and the Emergency Management Review Letter. Also conditioned upon the signing of the township's required land development waiver documentation, the posting of financial security, the satisfying of all applicable township codes and municipal authority requirements, obtaining all applicable permits from outside agencies, and paying all project-related costs and fees when due, including consultant and solicitor's fees. Again, recommendation is for the waiver.
Okay, and who's here from the applicant?
Hi, my name is Eric Brits with Bowler Engineering. I'm the engineer for the applicant. We have gone through the review letters and the draft of the resolution, and the applicant is in agreement to comply with all the recommendations. I do have some slides with me if you want to look at this a little further, if you have any questions, or whatever you guys want to do.
Sure, let's see them. Why not?
Okay, well, the first slide that you're looking at is an aerial image overlaid onto the existing conditions plan. What you're looking at is Norristown Road on the south side of the, or the lower portion of the slide on the east side of the property. This is near the intersection of Street and Norristown Road, but set in 100 yards or so from Street Road off of the first access point from Norristown Road to... It's more or less a maintenance access drive or delivery access drive. It's named Resurrection Drive. As you walk, as you come into the drive, there's an existing office. It was a sample cottage that was built as part of the retirement community development. And coming in further, there is a newly refurbished maintenance building on the left-hand side, and what you're looking at on the right-hand side are the two existing maintenance buildings that are being removed. Amanda, if you could go to the next slide, number four. Maybe it's not four. Let me try. All right, well, I'll go through these. So this picture that you're looking at right here is a picture of those two existing buildings that are being demolished. If you could go to number four now. And that is a rendering of the new proposed maintenance building that's going in to replace those buildings. Essentially, in the same footprint of those two existing buildings. And I guess it would be number two. So this is a rendering of the new, of the site plan with an aerial overlay, basically showing the location of the new building, really within the location of the old buildings. I think Mr. Bartle summed it up pretty well with a summary of the square footages that we're proposing.
Any discussion from the Board, or any questions from the Board?
The only question that I have is, just to make sure it's more for our staff, is that the water, the sewer water issues on Norristown Road, that has nothing to do with this project? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. That's all I got.
Anyone else have anything? The public have anything before the Board takes action? Okay. I'm going to ask for a motion to consider the approval of resolution-31, Christ Home, waiver of land development. So moved. Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatour, any further discussion from the Board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. Nice-looking building. It's a nice-looking building we put up there. Okay, next up is item C, Bucks County Municipal Waste Management Plan Adoption. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you've been waiting eagerly for this one as well. It has come time that the county had to go ahead through their Bucks County Solid Waste Advisory Committee and review and revise their municipal waste management plan as required by state statutes. The plan was included in your packet. It's also been sent to the Environmental Advisory Council, which finds it generally acceptable. They did provide some other comments related to the implementation of that plan. It's here for your consideration. The Board can either ratify it, disapprove of it, and state the reasons why, conditionally approve it, which is also considered legally a disapproval, or take no action. And we're recommending, and we see no reason not to approve it.
So any discussion before we take action? I don't think so. I took a look through it myself.
It's interesting, if you have a moment, to look at the stats and the amount of waste that's generated by the county, and also see the decline, you know, as the population has increased, the amount of waste disposal has actually decreased. So I think that's a testament to the entire county, you know, having efforts to go ahead and reduce their waste.
I think it's fairly self-explanatory.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to consider approval of resolution-32, approval of the Bucks County Municipal Waste Management Plan. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second. Mr. Crowe, any further discussion from the Board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, next up is public comment. Our first round, Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items. Subject to the five-minute guideline is recognized by the Chair. Is there any public comment? Sure. I see a few lined up. Come on up, George.
I hear about the ordinance here, I guess putting in paper soon about the methods changed to the seconds to remove the minimum character size.
Yeah, I'm going to give that to Mr. Schuster.
Actually, but you know, I don't want to interrupt, but we're going to get to that later. We found out from the applicant that requested the change that's actually not going to work for them, so our recommendation later on this evening is going to pull the advertisement and roll it into a larger revision of the ordinance.
You've read my thoughts.
All right.
Number two, I want to thank you, Greg, for last Tuesday, the EPA meeting.
Thank you.
I was there at 9:00 in the morning, you stayed at 2:00, and you and Bill, Mr. Hagie, were the best speakers there. You told it like it was, that they made the mistake, they have to correct it. They talked for four hours and said nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for showing up.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. And thank you, Greg. Any other public comments, or Pat?
Pat Boyle, Grand Avenue, I have two questions. One, we're getting a lot on the recycling, and everybody's telling us we can't have wet paper in our recycling, but our recycle bins are actually like milk crates that have holes of this size. So how do you expect the paper to stay dry, is my question?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. One of the things that we're looking into right now, as you're aware, that the contract with Mascarow is expiring. And when we go out to bid, I'm rather certain that the bid requirements are going to ask for prices both with and without receptacles.
Okay.
And it will be up to the Board, of course, but it would be a good discussion to have whether or not we want to go ahead and include in the price to have those receptacles issued both for trash and for recycling, which would alleviate that issue.
Okay, my second question is, I was walking up Newtown Road today, or yesterday, and I walked past Tall Oaks, and there's no anything looking like a sidewalk coming in there, and how do I find out where the approved plans are and I can get a look at them?
Well, we can get you the approved plans pretty quickly.
Okay.
Do we know what the status is on...
I did have a meeting with the contractor about two weeks ago to go over the trail and the sidewalk along the frontage, and my understanding is they will be installing it soon, but we don't have an exact schedule from them on dates. With the weather delays, there's been a lot of changes in their schedule.
Well, we were looking at the width of it, like where they could put like sidewalk quick, and it doesn't look like it's there.
Right, so they did...
I was with her at the time, so I can confirm what she's saying.
They did tell us they will have to move a couple of the trees that they have already installed, so that might address your concern, but it is set further back than sidewalk. It is set further into the site.
But it's not in the development, it's still for the public?
Correct.
Okay.
It is still in the right-of-way. It is for use by the public. It will be able to be used by the public.
That's our concern.
Yes.
And we hear it every day, so, thank you.
While you're on Tall Oaks, I've been getting some pictures and emails, and I think you have too, Kathy, about a little duck pond that's developed behind the construction trailer. Can you address that when your inspectors are out there?
So I did actually go and take a look at it today because we had this concern, and that's another issue that we had brought up to the contractor in the recent weeks. They have been putting in dunks in there to kill off any mosquito...
Dunks?
Yeah, the ducks showed up on the room, but... To kill off any mosquitoes, so there shouldn't be any issues with mosquitoes breeding or West Nile being transmitted in that location. But what the other thing they're going to do is scratch or scarify it to help that water drain through quicker. But once they build the trail, they've already staked it out, so again, that portion should be soon. They will grade that area, and so it shouldn't be holding water any longer.
You're addressing, you're on it.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Also, Karen, can I ask, with the sidewalk at Tall Oaks, is it going to connect to the other sidewalk on Newtown Road? Why, is it be the only spot that is not connected with the sidewalk?
Right, so it's going to connect to, I believe, Centennial Station. It's going to come through along their frontage, and then it's going to go and extend in front of the cemetery piece that's there, and I believe it's the Fox Run Apartments then that it would be connecting into. So it is going to extend along their frontage and the property next to them.
Okay.
Good, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Great. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A very short consent agenda this evening, two items. Item A is the approval of the minutes from your July 19, 2018 meeting, and item B is release number 16, Hart School, from the escrow account, in the amount of $63,099.72 as recommended by the engineer.
Is that the final escrow release on Hart School?
It's not the final.
It is not.
Okay. All right, I ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion.
Ms. Frescatour, second.
Second.
Mr. Crowe, any further discussion?
No.
Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Next up is finance report, which a July report will be sent when it's complete, being that we're meeting early in August, but we do have some matters to take care of, which I'll give to Mr. Schuster.
Just thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you correctly stated, we'll send that report out as soon as it's complete for July. Item number A is the supplemental bill list dated July 31, 2018, in the amount of $1,513,980.72 and a request to motion to approve that.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion on the motion? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item B, Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our third budget amendment request for the year. As you're aware, the second-class Township Code provides for changes to the budget after the third month of every single year. This one transfers funds that were dedicated in the general fund over to the highway traffic fund from the Jacksonville Road Development that's being used to improve signalization in the intersections there, such as replacing cabinets, doing some emergency preemption for emergency vehicles, new detection, mostly radar, and also some work on the crosswalks. The other major portion of it is some internal library fund transfers, which are budget-neutral.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the budget amendment 2018, number three, resolution 2018-34? Mr. McPhillips, is there a second? Mr. Monroe, any discussion on the motion? The Board, any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up, unfinished business, fireworks resolution 2018-33. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, at your last meeting, you did request that a resolution be prepared to express the Board's concern with the recent change in state law, which allows for a variety of fireworks to now be sold and possessed. This resolution was drafted in response to that. I will read this off so you can let us know if this works for you, or if you want to make any changes. Whereas on October 30, 2017, the State of Pennsylvania adopted Act 43 of 2017, which replaced Act 204 of 2004 to govern the sale of fireworks in Pennsylvania. And whereas the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors has noticed a significant increase in call volume to the Warminster Police Department reporting violations concerning fireworks, and whereas the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors is concerned for the health and safety of residents associated with the increased use of fireworks, including the fear of fire from misuse, additional noise nuisance during the day and night, increased suffering of veterans and other residents with PTSD, and added distress to pets and their owners, and whereas the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors believes the reduced restrictions on the sale of fireworks in Pennsylvania represent a danger to the public and a threat to our quality of life, and now therefore the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors opposes the changes made to the sale of fireworks in Pennsylvania as outlined in Act 43 of 2017, and calls for the repeal of this act as it concerns the sale of fireworks. And should you approve this this evening, we will mail it out to the appropriate elected state officials.
I think you've covered it all with that. I mean, I know that every one of us has been getting bombarded with phone calls for the last couple of months since this began, so.
I just wanted to add that there are folks out there that are licensed, and they follow the rules and regulations, and they didn't cause any, except for the Fourth of July. However, we've got 80% of the rest of the group that's been lighting them off now, even up until yesterday, I'm still hearing them, and so they abuse it. It's a shame, because I love fireworks, but not going on for two, three weeks at a time.
Noticed last Saturday night it rained, so Sunday night was the fireworks show.
Exactly.
For a month, we're getting approaching-
I just want to make the comment, there are people that are law-abiding, that follow the rules and all that, but then you've got the majority that are abusing it, it's a shame.
I think it's a problem, because even where our ordinance, it's 150 feet. We don't have that many situations in the township.
Exactly, we don't.
I mean, I'm getting calls about fireworks landing on people's roofs, I'm afraid someone's going to lose their house or their lives if they're asleep. And it's a problem.
We've got, we've all gotten the same calls.
And Chief Donnelly's getting phone calls, or it's a burden on our police department.
Right.
You know, I was just going to say that, you know, it's Township Manager Greg Schuster there, very wisely brought up all the township ordinances that cover this. That is not solely just Warminster. I mean, I'm pretty sure that probably the majority of townships across the state have ordinances that deal with fireworks.
Well, just, I don't believe it's the ordinance that comes into play here. I believe it's the state law that has the 150-foot requirement. Is that correct, Chief? Yeah, is that, so it's state law?
Well, that's even better.
Yes.
Because my point is, is that by passing, by the State Assembly passing it, they're basically promoting an increase in violations of their own law. And I don't know how much conversation went into this when they passed it. I mean, I agree, I know, Mr. Cherry, that this was kind of your baby. I completely support it, and, you know, I mean, all we're doing is we're kind of saying something back to the Assembly just to take a look at it.
And we're not looking to insult any of our state officials or anything like that, it's just this is, we can't be the only municipality in Pennsylvania that's having this problem.
Right.
We can't be. And I'm just worried about it. I mean, someone's going to lose their home, someone's going to lose a hand. You go over the Trenton Bridge into Pennsylvania, there's a billboard, turn off here all the fireworks you want.
Right.
And that's, to me, that's just unacceptable. You know, I don't, I don't, I think it's a public safety issue, I do.
Was it 10 o'clock the other night I texted you?
That's your day.
It's my whole house shook, and then my dog is up in my lap, and he's shivering and all that kind of stuff, so.
So I think this is appropriate, and I hope that there's many other municipalities asking their state officials to make a change, so.
I think it's the primary responsibility as a board is to oversee the health, safety, and well-being of township residents, and I think with the volume of fireworks that are going off, it's just a matter of time before someone gets seriously hurt or property seriously damaged. So I completely support this. One thing to be mindful of, if you look at Act 43, where that tax, where that benefits the tax stream is for grants for EMS and for training for volunteer firefighters. In no way is this board against training for volunteer firefighters. We completely support volunteer firefighters. So if we want to put something, language in that, saying that we're not against that, we're not against grants for EMS, but we do recognize there's a serious problem in Warminster, and it's just only a matter of time before someone gets seriously hurt.
Yeah, they just have to look at other avenues to generate revenue-
Exactly.
-other than selling people firearms, explosives. You know, I know Brian's always arguing with someone on Facebook last night, two of these M80s is a quarter stick of dynamite. Do people really need to be walking around with a quarter stick of dynamite? I don't think so.
That far the other night. Did you hear it in your neighborhood, Morris?
Yes, I don't think so. That's just my own opinion, and I'm entitled to it, so. So maybe we could inject some language, some of that language into that?
Actually, I can bring it back to the next meeting, or if you trust me to, you know, put a sentence or two in there that you can, you know-
I trust you.
So can we, can we do the resolution tonight with-
Adopt it as, to be further amended by the Township Manager.
Something to the review of the Township Manager, yeah. Okay, that sounds like a motion to me. Is there a motion?
Sir, move.
Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion? Is there any discussion from the public on this?
Can I just ask a question? We have a question.
Yeah.
Before Labor Day, can you just say where the township's 150 feet from the building is?
I can answer that. Essentially nowhere. You know, and that's why, you know, that, in rural areas, it doesn't matter, because you do have that kind of separation. But in Warminster Township, 150 feet away from a structure is hard to find, and we remind people that you have to have the owner's permission, and the township, being the owner of roads and parks, we don't give permission to set off fireworks. So there's probably just a couple places in the township that would actually fit within that state regulation.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll get the phone calls tomorrow. New business, authorization to advertise an RFP for Township Auditing Services. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had the presentation earlier this evening from the auditor. That concludes their three-year engagement with the township. It's our recommendation to issue an RFP. We're not making this recommendation because of any dissatisfaction with their service, but we feel every time that the contract ends, it's wise to go out, issue the RFP. As stated in the draft RFP that's before you, it is not, the entity chosen is not chosen solely on the fee, so you have discretion on who you want to award it to. The way the RFP is designed is it would be a three-year contract with an option for two additional years, that option being at the township's discretion. The only other thing I'll note, you'll notice that the dates are blank in there, that's something that myself and the finance director would fill out once we finalize the RFP and issue it.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the advertisement for the RFP for Township Auditing Services?
Motion.
Ms. Frescatour, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Yeah, I'll do the-
Yeah, you want to touch on that digital billboard?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although it's not listed on the agenda, just came up recently, and as Mr. Lewis spoke earlier and I responded, we're recommending that the board pull the advertisement for the ordinance change on the digital billboards. If you recall, the change was to change the cycle times from 30 seconds down to eight seconds, which is the state standard, as well as eliminate the size requirement for the characters in discussions with the applicant. The applicant was not aware that this change would not get them what he wanted. So our recommendation is to pull this advertisement, this ordinance change, and we are already in the process of starting up a holistic review of the zoning ordinance. These changes would be rolled into that and looked at that way, or go through the planning commission, and then before you. So our recommendation is to vote to rescind the authorization to advertise.
Okay, so that takes, that requires action, then?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatour, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next up, item nine, Township Manager, announcement of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There'll be no meeting on the 16th. Our next meeting will be September 20th.
That's going to be a long one.
Well, we anticipate we'll probably have quite a bit of business for you. At the moment, the only two things I can foresee is possibly the trash and recycling RFP draft might be ready for your first view. And additionally, I anticipate having some initial comments on the 2019 budget at that time. I don't know if I'll be in a position to present the entire budget, but I would at least be in a position to present some high-level numbers and a framework that I'm looking at for 2019 and beyond.
Okay. All right, next up is second round of public comment. Public has an opportunity to comment on anything? No? Okay. Next up is supervisors' comments. Ms. Frescatour?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment, I went to the ribbon cutting for Joe's Train. They're right next to Crusoe's on County Line Road, it's a really unique store. Many years ago, there were a lot of those hobby stores, especially with the model trains. Now they're very far and few in between, so I think Warminster's very lucky to have had this business move into Warminster since it was in Southampton before, if I remember.
Yeah, Buzzelton and Street.
Right. So that was a really nice business. And then Pat Boyle had mentioned that the food truck, I forget the name of it, Freddie's Food Truck, that it's excellent, and I know that-
Street food, right, Freddie Street Food, Jacksonville Station?
Yes, yes. So I want to give a shout-out to them, and thank everybody here for a really good meeting tonight.
Awesome. Mr. Monroe?
I have not tonight.
Mr. McPhillips?
Yeah, last Wednesday, I had an opportunity to meet with residents at the Warminster Library, and I want to thank everyone over at the Warminster Library, and I also want to thank Jim Boyle for helping get the word out on Warminster Live. But if you recall, it was raining pretty bad on Wednesday, and residents still came out, and I've been meeting with the residents for different locations of the township for the past five years now, and most of the time, I can answer the questions, but a lot of the time is, I'll get the concerns and questions, and I'll bring them back to the Township Manager, Greg, or the Assistant Township Manager, Amanda, and I just want to thank you guys for working with me and helped resolve questions and concerns for the residents, and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Greg, Amanda, thank you.
Awesome.
That's it.
Mr. Crowe?
Just want to mention, one of the groups we recognize as business of the month was Hapbar Federal Savings, and they do a great job supporting our township, especially the parks and rec. And in fact, Karen Winnie today met with Linda over at Hapbar Federal, and Hapbar Federal gave a $1,500 check to support, to sponsor the golf outing. Every year, they are big sponsors of the outing and our parks, and we really, we really appreciate it, I just wanted to mention that, considering we just honored them this evening. Also want to give a special shout-out, congratulations and thank you to Jim Boyle. Yeah, Jim is with us this evening as a citizen, but Jim is also a citizen journalist with Warminster Live, and currently is at the Intel, Bucks County Courier, whatever one you read. Jim's moving on to greener pastures from the Intel, is going to be, hopefully, a long-term lucrative gig for Jim. But over the years that I've been on the board, Jim's wrote a lot of stories about Warminster, he's given a lot of coverage to this community, always a straight shooter, always working in the best interest of the township and its residents, and I just wanted to thank you for your service as a journalist. Yep, there he is. Jim, thank you, yeah. Congratulations, Jim. And we look forward to you continuing Warminster Live, but wish you the best luck in your new role.
Yes, and he stole my thunder, I had that on my list as well. I want to congratulate you, Jim, and wish you all the best in your new endeavor, and thank you for the coverage that you've given Warminster. And like I said to you the other night, you've always treated me fairly, and you've always treated everyone fairly. I think you're a top-notch reporter, I really do. So, good luck with your endeavor. And also, I just want to wish everyone a happy rest of their summer, safe rest of their summer. We have Labor Day weekend, we won't meet till after Labor Day, so everyone have a good Labor Day, and all of you working people, make sure you take Labor Day off and enjoy it. With that, I will ask for a motion with adjourned. Mr. McPhillips, meeting adjourned.